SJC 11401, Mary Ann Dougherty versus Planning Board of Situate.
Let's proceed.
May it please the Court, my name is Brandon Moss and I'm here on behalf of the Situate Planning Board. This is a very straightforward bylaw in case when reduced to its essence. Being in the floodplain and watershed protections zoning district requires a special permit to build a new house on land in that district. And the special permit standard, in part, and the relevant part here, is as being in fact not subject to flooding. That's what an applicant has to show. The important portion of that is as being in fact. It's a factual determination. It was a factual determination in terms of the bylaw being prepared in 1972, and it's a factual issue here today in the 21st century. It's not an issue necessarily of science, it is an issue of fact. Water overflowing onto land is flooding. And that is what this case is about. In terms of the special permit standard as being in fact subject to flooding, Ms. Dougherty makes an argument about the substantial injustice from the physical characteristics of land. Well, that's why for land that's in the district, the bylaw creates a special permit mechanism that addresses whether or not the land is as being in fact subject to flooding. At trial, there was, as a factual matter, a number of witnesses, including Ms. Dougherty herself, testified about water flowing from the ocean across the lots towards the roadway. We had four residents, including the next door neighbor, three residents who had to drive right by the property to get to their own houses, and we had the plaintiff herself, Ms. Dougherty, who all testified about this phenomenon, this situation of factually of water flowing across the lots and into the road.
Can I ask you a question? Our first and second cliffs within the district?
First and sec— portions of first and second cliffs are within the district. In terms of the district, there's two reference points, two 10-foot elevation contours along first and second cliffs, and above that 10-foot elevation point, that's outside the district. The Dougherty lots are within, between the two cliffs. It's undisputed that they're in the district.
Dotted lines on the maps, on the map, define the district?
They are reference points for defining the district location, yes.
So, one would see what is and is not within the district by looking at the dotted lines?
The dotted lines, or if a person were to apply for a building permit, the building—
Well, it's supposed to give notice, right? I mean, isn't that what the map is supposed to do? Supposed to give notice?
It's supposed to give notice, correct.
So, if you're looking at the map, you have to look at the—how would you know if it was something other than the dotted lines?
Well, it would just be looking at the map, and in consultation with the building commissioner in terms of applying for that building permit, because a building permit requires zoning compliance.
So, this property, these two lots, are between first cliff and second cliff?
Correct.
But they're within the dotted lines, or no?
They are between the two dotted lines.
So, okay, so the dotted lines don't really tell you whether or not you're within the district?
The dotted lines, if you're on first cliff, tell you whether or not you're within the district. But if you're between first cliff and second cliff, the dotted lines aren't a relevant reference point, because that land is in the district.
There was evidence, testimony to the effect that these two lots were within the district?
There was testimony, and the appeals court held, the parties didn't dispute the presence of the properties in the district. The trial judge held that the map was clear and unambiguous. There was also testimony from the drafter of the bylaw, Vincent Calicious, who testified that it was the clear intention to include the barrier beach between the two cliffs on which the Dougherty lots are located to be in the district. In terms of this issue as a factual matter, though, we do have, you know, evidence that was the same type of evidence that was the case in 1972. And that's why this Dunn versus Commissioner of Civil Service case is not, which the appeals court placed quite a bit of emphasis on, is not on point here, because we're dealing with factual evidence. Just as in the 1970s, residents, neighborhood groups, provided their observations of water coming in on land. That is the exact same evidence that the five fact witnesses at trial all testified about as to these two lots, with different levels of severity and intensity of the water flowing across these lots from the ocean, whether it be on an annual or monthly basis or more severe amounts of water from the blizzard of 1978 or nor'easters.
But if the— if in 1972, there was this observational testimony, or observations were used in determining what fell into the floodplain district, still, the bylaw permitted a determination, one would think, that notwithstanding that, you could prove that in fact it wasn't subject to flooding, right?
Correct. An applicant in 1972, as is the case now, could prove as a matter of fact that the property was not subject to flooding.
Notwithstanding the observations that may have been made in the first place—
Correct.
—to put them into the floodplain district.
Correct. If a property owner disputed why their property was included in the floodplain district, they did have that recourse.
How do you do that, though? I mean, is it like a 100-year floodplain and a 500-year floodplain? You have to watch the land for 500 years?
No, the way the map was prepared in the 70s was that the two drafters met with town residents to see where water reached during storm events. They used that—
But isn't it for a 100-year floodplain and a 500-year floodplain?
Well, they looked at— they were looking at—when they met with lay residents, there wasn't that sort of differentiation, and the trial judge made that notation, that it wasn't entirely—the people saw water on the land, that's what they based it off of from a lay standpoint.
Okay, so you get an unusual storm, comes up every 50 years. Does that mean that the land is—every 200 years, the land is subject to flooding? They just happen to be there at the right place at the right time, when there was a bad storm and the flooding would take place?
Well, that's why there's discretion to the planning board, to make those determinations as to whether it's seasonal, periodic, or some sort of an isolated event. It just happens to be with these properties that we're dealing with the big storms, the blizzard of 1978, we're dealing with hurricanes, Hurricane Ida, these properties flooded, and more frequently from other storms over the course of a year, there were residents who saw water come in. But that's why there's a special permit procedure that looks at, as a matter of fact, whether or not the land is subject to flooding.
Do we know from particularized findings what was the consideration here in the vote? That was a split vote, right?
This was a split vote. The evidence that was in the decision itself made included quite a number of statements from residents. There weren't just the four residents who testified at trial, there were other residents who also had provided testimony to the planning board about witnessing water during storm events of varying intensity on these lots.
Including Mrs. Dougherty, as I read it.
Including Ms. Dougherty. And that gets to, you know, this issue of what the appeals court held and what we argue is error, is even the plaintiff herself testified that it was reduced—this issue of observations by residents was reduced to a footnote that says that it didn't compel an alternative result. But that ignores the rules of statutory construction. Every word in a statutory enactment of bylaw is accorded effect. And the magic four words here, "as being in fact," those are issues of fact.
Yeah, "as being in fact, not subject to flooding." But are we to look at this bylaw as basically saying, everything that's designated on the map as being within the floodplain district is presumptively subject to flooding? And you, property owner, if you want to build in ways that the bylaw does not otherwise permit, you have to prove to us that it does not, it's not subject in fact to flooding.
Correct. That's exactly how this bylaw is—
So, in Justice Spina's example of a 200-year flood, but you happened—there happened to be a witness there on that 200th year, and the planning board said, "Oh, it's subject to flooding, no permit." There'd be no way to challenge that, right?
Well, the way to challenge that would be through the normal process, which happened here, which is that Ms. Dougherty is in the district, she applied for the special permit, she disagreed with the planning board's denial of the special permits, and she, under a Chapter 48, Section 17 appeal, an appeal through the zoning act—
Right, no, I know procedurally you can do it, but I just meant substantively it's going to be hard to do.
It is, but there's balancing considerations, which this court recognized in Turpik Realty and recognized in the Gove versus zoning board of Chatham case, that there isn't just about the applicant. It also—there are—this is an exercise in the municipal police power for safety, for health, for welfare, and these are purposes that are stated even in this bylaw. If there is a flood event, whether it be a 200-year flood event or flood event of less frequency, it's the town of Situate in this case that has to potentially endanger the lives of public safety personnel, that has to spend its resources to get to the residents on those properties.
Yeah, how do you disprove it, though? As a practical matter, how do you disprove that the land is not subject to flooding? Do you—you could say, "Look, I was out there, I pitched a tent out there, stayed for a year, never flooded." Will that do it?
Well, a property owner could do that.
Yeah, I know they can do it, but would that satisfy the planning board?
That would be a question, I think, for their discretion. They may, a planning board in that hypothetical situation could find that over that period of time, perhaps that that was not subject to flooding.
Are there standards by which to—the applicant can gauge what it is they have to prove?
Well, an applicant, I think, has a number of things that they could do in terms of actual eyewitness observations that a property did or did not flood. And certainly in this case, there were countervailing observations from the residents that it did in fact flood. But that's really—it's somewhat open-ended or flexible in that regard, because it's just an issue of flooding. We're not talking about a specific type of flooding, we're talking about flooding as a factual matter, which, you know, it's usual and accepted meaning is water coming onto land. It happens to be, in this case, they were right next to the ocean, so it borders the ocean, so the water comes from the ocean across the land. But it's somewhat—it's—there's a level of precision in that, that standard.
What—the appeals court said it was error to—I guess for the judge to reference the FEMA, the later FEMA plans, right?
Yes.
But what's your position on that?
Our position is that the—there were two types of evidence before the planning board and before the land court, either of which were sufficient to demonstrate subject, in fact, subject to flooding. We argue that the actual resident observations on its own is sufficient. As an alternative, there are the FEMA maps. They do predict flooding in a big storm, a 100-year storm, that has 1% of a chance to occur every year, and that those FEMA flood zones predict the wave activity on the property and that the—where the water goes. They are actually consistent with some of the observations from residents as to what happened with water, where the waves went. One of the residents had testified at trial that from the ocean to Edward Foster Road, there was—from the nor'easter of 1991, I'm sorry, the blizzard of 1978, there was approximately five feet of water that had pushed across, based on the embankment of sand and the water going over the sand. But that is a type of flooding. But it's either of which, we argue, demonstrates in fact, in fact, that these properties do flood or are subject to flooding, and that the plaintiff here did not meet her burden in terms of demonstrating otherwise.
Appeals court makes something of the fact that where the footprint of the houses on the lots, it's—the mean sea level is actually 14 and 16 feet above that, and that the proposed buildings would be on pilings, which would reach—the top of which would then reach an elevation of 21 feet above MSL. And you're talking about a pretty bad storm with five feet of water. I'm not sure how those two numbers relate.
Well, the bylaw itself doesn't deal with in the special permit standard—the special permit standard does not deal with, doesn't use the word elevation, it says land subject to flooding. The land below these properties on pilings was demonstrated, as a matter of fact, to be subject to flooding, and the issues of getting to individuals, the residents of these properties, which is not going to be the plaintiff, it's going to be two sets of homeowners in these permanent four-bedroom houses, those residents, if there is a storm, to get to those residents, the town of Situate will expend municipal public resources, will potentially endanger the safety of public safety personnel. And those are purposes that were recognized by this court in Turpik Realty and also by Engov. It rests on our briefs. Thank you, Your Honors.
Thank you, counsel.
Good morning, may it please the Court. I'm Leonard Singer, and together with Michael Bliss, who's sitting at counsel table, we represent Mary Ann Dougherty, who was in the courtroom this morning. Your honors, this case presents a question of law to this court, and in particular, that question of law is, what does the bylaw mean by the term "subject to flooding"? And it's undisputed that in 1972, everyone understood that elevation and elevation alone—
Well, the judge used the dictionary definition, and why isn't that okay, of the time?
Well, Your Honor, the dictionary definition, first of all, is a secondary source, and I submit that there is a definition in the statute itself. But secondly, Your Honor, there's no evidence here whatsoever that Town Meeting or Mr. Calicious consulted the dictionary, and in fact—
You said "everybody" understood. Who's "everybody"?
Oh, okay. I'll take that back, Your Honor. You got me on that one. Town Meeting understood, the drafters of this statute understood, and it was the accepted scientific wisdom of the time that flooding depended on elevation and elevation alone.
Is there any other way to determine if flooding occurs, like, if flooding occurs within, you know, every 10 years or something like that, a certain kind of vegetation will never appear, or a certain kind of vegetation will appear, and it will only be found if the land is, you know, is regularly watered with the sea? Is there any other way to figure this out?
I'm sure that a scientist, Your Honor, could answer that question. And FEMA, in the 40 years that's elapsed since the bylaw, this bylaw was passed in today, the science of flooding is just light years different from what it was in 1972. And I'm sure that FEMA brings to bear all sorts of indicia, all sorts of tests, all sorts of data, to determine flooding. And FEMA has defined different types of flooding. Flooding is no longer a one-dimensional thing, the one-dimensional thing that it was in 19—
Well, what do you say to your brother's argument that flooding is water that comes onto the land?
I say—
Isn't it?
That is a standardless, a meaningless standard, Your Honor. As several questions from the bench have indicated, just because someone happens to be there when water is on the land, does that make the land subject to flooding? Your Honor, in my years of practice, I have, on many occasions, walked up School Street and walked up the—through the courtyard in front of this courthouse in heavy rains. And on School Street, you see water coursing downhill from the Parker House Hotel down School Street, and there are these puddles, two and three and four and five, six inches deep on the courtyard in front of this very courthouse. That's water on land that is normally dry. I don't think, though, in common understanding, that School Street and the courtyard outside of this building is subject to flooding, Your Honor. I think that that's just hap—if someone happens to be there and testifies that I was in front of a certain place and I saw water on the land, and the planning board says, "Okay, that's flooding," as someone—as the questions to Mr. Moss indicated, how do you counter that? The science is 100-year storm, 500-year storm. The notion that lay testimony, "I saw water," adds up—
I take it it's not just water, it's water from the ocean? No? I mean, is the testimony, "I just—I saw water during the rain," or was it, "I saw the ocean"?
Or flowing over the land?
Well, I think in fairness, the testimony regarding the lots was water from the ocean. I think that's a fair comment, Your Honor. But nevertheless, in what type of storm? I mean, the flooding, certainly the FEMA definitions of flooding, talk about water during the 100-year storm. If it's the 500-year storm that causes water from the ocean to be on the lots, FEMA does not consider that to be—that land to be subject to flooding.
If the FEMA map had said that this land was not subject to flooding, would it have been admissible at the hearing?
Yes, I think so.
So, why can they not consider it when it says the opposite?
Well, Your Honor, let me come—let me answer this question. Mr. Moss made the argument that the—
Try my question.
Okay.
If they can consider the fact that the FEMA map says you win, how come they can't consider the fact that the FEMA map says you lose?
The standard under the statute, Your Honor, is elevation. I think that that—and if you're above the elevation, that's dispositive. If you were below the elevation, if this land were below 10 feet in elevation, I think it would be appropriate to submit the FEMA map to say, "Well, look, we're below the elevation," but—
So, you're really saying that it's an exception to the whole district, aren't you? The overlay district? I mean, if you're above the—you're sort of defining the district as, in fact, although I understand not on the map, but in fact, really only within the geographical boundaries as long as it's under 10 feet of elevation?
Well, we're not saying that the lots are in the district. I mean, that—if you look at the—
Right, but you're sort of defining the district in a way, because as I understand what you're arguing, as a matter of law, your client was entitled to a special permit because the elevation was over 10 feet.
We are—that is correct. We are arguing that, Your Honor. But we are not changing the district as—the point of the district, as was elucidated in an earlier question, is to put the property owner on notice that their property may be subject to flooding. And if I can come back to the words "in fact, subject to flooding," that's the words in the bylaw. The question is not what gloss we can put on those words today, but what did Town Meeting mean by those words?
Where do you get that from? That's what Town Meeting understood the words to mean, as opposed to, you know, when Town Meeting didn't choose to define the words, "We have to do this like we would any statute." You're saying we have to look at Town Meeting intent?
The whole purpose of statutory construction, Your Honor, is to divine the intent of the enactor. So, it is—the question for this court is not what gloss we could put today on "in fact," but what they meant when they said "in fact."
Well, don't we have to look at then the bylaw and the way, you know, as a whole, including the purposes that the bylaw expressly contains? We have to look at the entire bylaw, not just a section of it.
That's correct.
And the bylaw, it seems to me, may very well call for a broad understanding of what flooding means.
Well, I—one would look at the bylaw from the point of view, first of all, 47010, which talks about the building inspector being able to require a plot plan showing elevation.
Yes, isn't that only when there's a question about whether or not it is within the floodplain district?
To be sure, Your Honor, to be sure. But so is likewise the expression of purposes. If you look at the expression of purpose, it talks about protecting against the dangers of flooding for properties which are subject to flooding. And what this case is about is not about the purposes, it's about whether the property is subject to flooding, whether it comes within the purpose. And if I can also suggest, Your Honor, that the bylaw also manifests a purpose, that if properties are not subject to flooding, that they be free of any regulation, because the bylaw places properties outside the district that are completely unaffected by this bylaw.
So, your view is that if this property is 10 and 1/2 feet high, even if the evidence is that in every bad storm, water from the ocean floods over, you're still entitled to a special permit?
That's the definition. That's what "subject to flooding" in this bylaw means, 10 feet.
Is this a case of—I need to be oriented here. Is this a case of the bylaw being ultra-viris of enabling legislation, or is this a case where the legislature has said, has made a—expressed a legislative determination of fact, which is, it's undisputable, 10 feet, you're free and clear?
That's exactly correct. That's exactly—that is a—
It's the legislature?
The Town Meeting.
The Town Meeting.
The Town Meeting.
And you take that solely from the map? And you think the map is so clear on that point?
I think the map—I don't take it solely from the map, but I do think the map is clear on that point. 30 occasions along the Massachusetts Bay, along the shore here, Your Honor, the demarcation is 10 feet. The only exceptions, I submit, are accounted for by ease of mapping and political considerations, Your Honor. That was the criteria, and that was what Mr. Calicious testified to, that they determined that land that was below 10 feet was subject to flooding, land that was above 10 feet was not subject to flooding. And that's what—if you look at the map, that's what stares out at you. And to come back to 47010, which is not applicable here, Your Honor, to be sure not applicable, but it reinforces the notion that elevation is the criteria here. And that's what this statute says to me. And yes, the concepts of flooding have changed. That's an antiquated concept, but that's the one that's in the statute. And that's—if that is to change, Town Meeting has to change it. If I can segue to the notion that lay testimony was used to formulate in preparation of this statute, there's a difference between allowing lay testimony to provide observations. "I saw water on such and such a date, I saw so much water on such and such a date." But that's different than allowing a lay person to express a scientific opinion. And I submit to you, the question of whether land is subject to flooding needs—that lay testimony needs to go through the filter of science. How big a storm was it? How much water was it? Things of that nature.
Was the lay testimony that it was subject to flooding, or lay testimony that I saw that it flooded?
The lay testimony was, "I saw water." I mean, yeah, I think that's—
Saw a lot of water. So, why is that not admissible? If I see a lot of water, which it was saltwater?
You're not arguing it's not admissible, you're—
It's not relevant, because the standard under this bylaw is 10 feet. I mean, my case depends on the fact that Town Meeting determined and manifested in this statute that flooding means 10 feet, means elevation, and therefore, that testimony, it's testimony, someone raises their right hand, but it's irrelevant to the statutory standard.
So, you want us to read the language, if in being in fact not subject to flooding, to read "being in fact with an elevation of more than 10 feet"? That's the exception.
Yes, Your Honor, and let me come back to the notion that—I interrupted, that the meaning that you give to the words "in fact" is the meaning intended by Town Meeting. Today, FEMA says that land outside of the district is in fact subject to flooding. That's today's interpretation, and that today, Ms. Dougherty's lots is in fact subject to certain types of flooding, et cetera, et cetera. But what Town Meeting— But what Town Meeting, they didn't know about FEMA, they didn't know about that. What they knew was that there was land in the district, which was there, necessarily placed there because of the holding in Leahy, which was not, in fact, subject to flooding, because they understood flooding to mean 10, 10 feet. And so what they meant by "in fact" was, in fact, not subject to flooding according to the definition that we understand.
Well, the question is, you said it's not just the map on which you are relying for this, you know, very definitive claim, that what Town Meeting meant and all that they meant was 10 feet. What else are you relying on?
I'm relying on 47010, Your Honor, which manifests a notion that this flooding determination in other circumstances depends on elevation. I'm relying on...
Said you're relying on some testimony.
I'm relying on the testimony of Mr. Calicious, that that's what they did. And I'm relying on the simple fact that in 1972, that's what flooding meant. That's what flooding was solely determined by elevation. That's what the land court found, and I'm looking at footnote 68, where the land court judge says that that's the, that's all, the only thing that was considered flooding in 1972 was flooding predicated on elevation. That's what, that was their universe. What else could they have meant?
But we often interpret statutes, you know, to move with the times, if you will. In other words, they, they can accommodate sort of later events or later realities within their scope. Why is this different?
Because you would be changing this, the definition which is in the statute. I submit to you that the map is certainly sufficient to put the elevation. I mean, the map is part of the statute, and it says 30 times, 10 feet. It's consistently there. That's what they understood flooding to be. There's no warrant in the statute whatsoever for any other definition of flooding. There's no warrant in Mr. Calicious's testimony for any other definition of flooding. It's in the statute, and it's beyond the power of the planning board, it's beyond the power of this court to change the statute.
All right, counsel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Harry, dear, he, hear you. All persons having anything further to do before the Honorable justices of the Supreme Judicial Court, now sitting in Boston, we begin to call upon them all. At present, the court can give your attendance at this place...